All right, welcome everybody to the December 18th City of Franklin Planning Commission Meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. We'll start our meeting with the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second and end discussion. All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity if there's items that are not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to speak to the commission about, please come forward and we'll listen to your thoughts. Otherwise, we'll move on. All right, I see none, then we will move on to announcements.
We have no announcements.
Then we'll move past announcements. All right, again, those in the audience, this is the point in the commission where, if there's items that are not on tonight's agenda that you want to consider or add to the agenda, we'll consider that. So if anybody has a non-agenda item they want us to consider, please come forward. All right, again, I see none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have two consent agendas, we have an initial consent and secondary consent. We'll start with the initial consent, and I'll then pass it to Roger to address the secondary consent. Initial consent is currently items two, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Anybody on the commission or the audience who wants to pull an item?
Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two, okay. Any others?
Are you saying this is for the initial consent?
This is the initial consent, we're going to pull item number twenty-two from the initial consent. Any others? All right, is there a motion for the initial consent agenda?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Okay, moved to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And we'll turn the floor over to Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll take up now items on secondary consent. Those items are item numbers twelve, thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Does anyone wish to have one of those items pulled from the secondary consent?
Twelve, twelve.
I don't think these items are on consent. I'm sorry. I think this is a type of twelve and fourteen. Twelve and...
Yeah, I agree.
They're rezoned.
And sixteen and seventeen, I don't think can be on consent either. These are resolutions and ordinances.
Twelve and nine.
I think those are. Is there secondary consent?
It's all four.
Okay.
All four need to come up.
Yes.
Do we need a motion to do the initial consent?
Nope.
All right, then, I'll take the floor back. All right, so we have a full agenda tonight, so let's get started. Get my house anywhere here, we'll start with item number three. Consideration of amendments to the major thoroughfare plan to reclassify First, Third, Bridge, and North Street from major collectors to minor arterials. Staff?
City staff was recently asked by developer to change the class, reevaluate some of the classifications of the roadways in the downtown area. As staff did this, we primarily looked at First Avenue North, Third Avenue North, Bridge Street, and North Margin Street, and came to the conclusion, the recommendation, to change these from major collectors to minor arterials. And it's mainly due to the connectivity that it provides from Franklin Road, Fifth Avenue, Highway ninety-six, East and West. The other reason we decided to make this recommendation was it also opens up additional funding sources for the Board of Mayor and Alderman if they choose to fund roadway improvements in your downtown area. Once again, the goal isn't to forelane these roadways, it was mainly just because of the connectivity that it provides in the downtown area to bypass Main Street, as an example. This, on November twenty-fifth of 2014, this, Resolution 2014-0075 was presented to the Board of Mayor and Alderman and unanimously approved to recommend these changes to the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission. So that said, we'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Okay, I see none, then is there someone representing the applicant? Oh, that'd be us, I'm sorry. You all represent the applicant. Okay, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
Yes, I'm going to move for an amendment. I understand, you know, the interest here in doing this, and I definitely agree with almost all of this. Because, as we all know, the traffic going, you know, from East Main to up first, and then over to Bridge Street, going directly into ninety-six West is getting more and more all the time. However, it wasn't until, and you know, I butted on this, what, a few weeks ago, I did not realize that that part that goes from Bridge Street up to North Margin is completely in the floodway. Actually, if you think about it, the, what we have sometimes called the sixteen blocks, you know, of the main downtown, the first part of the area, really is only fifteen. Because, they never built a road going first all the way up to North Margin, and I very well know the reason, it flooded all the time. But, but the thing is, it is entirely in the floodway, and if, I think what we have up now is the GIS map from the city showing, and you can see the, do I need to do, Paul, are you going to do that, or do I need to?
I mean, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, thank you.
I think what Alderman Peterson is trying to say is if you look at the blue areas, the floodway, and the red area that's attached is the Hundred Year Flood Plane, and the dotted black line is what our current major thoroughfare plan chose as First Avenue North Extension as a proposed project.
And I always knew it was in the floodplain, I did not know that it was completely in the floodway there. And so, I would like to amend, to go on and change the functional classifications of First Avenue North, Main Street to Bridge Street, Bridge Street, and Third Avenue North from the major collectors to minor arterials, but then that North Margin Street and First Avenue North, that is Bridge Street to North Margin Street, would remain as a major, as major collectors. And as I say, the other parts which carry, that are there now, which carry all the traffic, would become the minor arterials that have been requested. But, I do not think that building, that small area that's completely in the floodway would be helpful.
Okay. Or is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, moved to second, any discussion on the amendment?
So you wanted to eliminate that part of that road being built, is that...
To eliminate it from being described as a minor arterial.
Okay.
Because, of course, the Planning Commission cannot vote on building, building or not building.
Right.
You know.
What staff think about that?
My comment is, as long as it stays in the major thoroughfare plan, it provides the connectivity, and city staff would still recommend it being reclassified as a minor arterial, just to open up additional revenue sources so that one day it could be constructed, utilizing the road impact fees. So the staff recommendation would remain the same.
Well, I have the question, do we want to build in the floodway? I mean, this, you know, if we talk about the difference there, the floodway is basically the river. And, I do not think we need to build in the floodway. I mean, we have, we have areas out there, of course, that are in the floodplain, but if you look at Fifth Avenue there, from, I guess, Bridge Street all the way up to, you know, almost to Kroger and everything, that's in the floodplain, but virtually nothing is in the floodway there. And, we have enough, we have had, over the years, many problems with flooding, and I just, I think that, I think that it does not help anything to add to areas that can be flooded.
So my question would be, is it advantageous, because I agree with everything that Ms. Peterson just said, is it advantageous, because if the streets are included, the funds are, are the funds attached to a linear footage, I mean, the more streets, the better? I mean, do you understand what I'm saying, are they attached to the street itself?
So if it's classified as an arterial roadway, the board is allowed to use road impact fees to fund improvements. At this point, we're not asking to fund any improvements whatsoever, we're just recommending the, as long as it remains in the major thoroughfare plan, that it be reclassified because of the connectivity and what it does to the downtown circulation area. There are roadways within the city that are in the floodplain, I can't speak to which ones are actually in the floodway, but it, you know, we think that it will provide a lot of benefit, the majority of the time, in the rare instance where it does flood, yes, it will have to be shut down, but it would be designed in such a manner that it can be flooded and with minimal damage to the roadway.
And how much, I guess I ask the question, how much is this projected to cost, and how much road impact fee do you think we can get if we change this? Because, very honestly, this is all built out, except for the, for the proposal that's up tonight. It's like 1.2 million dollars, I believe, and how much would we expect to get in road impact fees?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Eric Stricki, I'm the city administrator, I try to address that a little bit. You hit the number exactly right, that what we projected in the capital process that we last did was a million point two for that segment of road. The eligibility, I think, is up to you, it's a budgetary discussion in terms of how you want to assign what types of funds. This would make it eligible for the use of road impact fees. Does not mean exclusively, it would just be one of the elements in the mix. If the board chose to move forward with a project of this nature, it would open up that option for you.
Well, I guess the question is, if the people who put what we think of as the sixteen blocks, they did not put a street on, that block is only fifteen, and the reason is because it's right there at the river. I mean, you, if you drive around First Avenue just going to Bridge Street, it says that it's, it has a ditch on the side, it doesn't have a ditch, it has the river, right there on the side. I mean, I'm not sure I understand...
I'm glad to answer a question, if, I'm not sure what you'd like me to answer from that, but...
Was there a reason that the people...
I can't speak to the founders of Franklin, I can speak to the current staff, and the discussion with the board a few weeks ago was about providing this as an option. There will be future decisions to be made about whether this is an appropriate road to build, and it, how it competes with other priorities that the board's dealing with, but this really opens up an option for funding that we don't have today because of how it's classified, and the judgment of staff in looking at it was, the connectivity that this group of roads provides between major arterials was justified the change in classification.
Well, maybe, I don't know whether you're the appropriate person, maybe our staff is, it would go, what, for four blocks, and then it dead-ends? I mean, think about it. This, this, this part of North Margin would dead-end at the river on this side, and it dead-ends on Fifth Avenue or Hillsborough Road on the other side. I don't see that as being an arterial.
It provides linkage and sort of a downtown bypass up from, in this case Franklin Road over to Hillsborough. That, from a network standpoint, that's what we're looking at, and there, Third Avenue North helps provide that as well, but those collectively help us provide sort of a, so you don't have to go on Bridge every time, you don't have to go through Main, you can use that as a way around the core of downtown. I think that's the primary thinking, Paul might be able to address it a little more thoroughly from a traffic flow standpoint, but that's my understanding.
All right, the second's been withdrawn for the amendment.
Okay, well, I'd like to make another comment then.
Okay.
I think that Franklin has many problems with flooding. Over the years, projects have been allowed to be built in the floodplain, and we have paid the price for that. I definitely do not feel that we ought to be adding to it in a situation where, unlike Bridge Street, which does continue on, onto Highway ninety-six West, I can see the reason to have that as an arterial. I do not see a reason, if you look back there, something that is four blocks long to be an arterial, four blocks long to be an arterial. And as I say, some of you may know that I have felt very strongly about protecting the floodplain and protecting people and projects from being built in the floodplain for as long as I can remember. Some of you may know that I lived in a house that was flooded many years ago, and the reason that I became interested in planning and in the city is because I thought I might never have a chance to do anything about that house, but I wanted to ensure that other people did not have houses that were built in the floodplain. And as I say, I feel very strongly about it. The other thing is, I think there are so many worthy projects that the city has, that I cannot see this as being one that is worthy than those other projects that are so worthy. And, but as I say, it's the business about the floodplain, I see, and everybody knows from 2010, whenever that area out there was, was just, you know, completely inundated, and now we have the new flood maps, and they're showing even more needs to be added to the floodplain. I'm very, very concerned that this is not good for many reasons.
All right, thank you. Well, so we have an open motion now, is there a second to that amendment to the main motion? All right, motion dies for the lack of a second, we're back to the main motion, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, Ms. Peterson votes no, but motion passes. Move on to item number four, Ordinance 2014-49, to be entitled an ordinance to annex the Adams property, consisting of 11.88 acres. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the first part of a four-part project. This is the annexation part of this property, is the property owner is requesting the annexation of 11.88 acres at the, located south of Murphysboro Road and immediately west of Ridgeway Drive. This area is requesting for the development of nineteen single-family units on that property. The board did hold a public hearing, and the board did vote to move forward with the annexation. As part of the annexation, there is a plan of service that you will be considering next. Staff recommends your approval on the annexation.
All right, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? If you would, please come forward. Okay, so we have some folks that have requested to speak, anybody want to come forward?
Good question.
Yeah, please come forward to the podium, let us know your name, where you live.
Name is John Manley, actually live on 2014 Beacon Hill Drive, which is basically just right in line with the left side of the grayish zone, right there. My question is, around the annexation, wasn't it linked to having homes that are on half-acre lots versus one-acre lots, or was that actually come later? So I've never been to meetings like this, I'm not exactly sure.
We'll just take your question and advisement, thank you for bringing that, and we'll let the applicant and the staff discuss that.
Okay.
Okay?
So when you got, oh, okay, I'm there.
All right. Anyone else? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hello, my name is Greg Gamble, and I'm here tonight with Eric Gardner, with Canon Buchanan, and Steve Bethel with Vertex Development, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number five, Resolution 2014-47, to be entitled a resolution adopting a plan of service for the annexation of certain areas by the City of Franklin, specifically the Adams property. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the plan of service is actually the map of what each of the parties will be responsible for. It lays out what the developer will be responsible for in terms of services, and in terms of the things that they will need to build, and it also lays out what the city's responsibilities are once that property is annexed. The city has worked with the developer in laying out accesses to the property, and looking at sewer, water, and all of the services that the city provides, and has also spoken with the developer about what needs to be done in terms of their responsibility to the city, and the staff would recommend your positive vote.
Okay.
On to Boma.
All right, again, anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? If you do, go ahead and come forward, be glad to hear.
My name's Susan Kaplan, and I just moved into that area about four weeks ago, brought home and didn't know anything about this development, so I'm a little, not, haven't got the whole story, I live on the edge, but I did speak to one of my neighbors who wasn't able to come tonight, and he mentioned that, about a levee being built to stop the, something about the seepage in the water coming down onto the homes around the periphery of that building development. Is that something that's going to be addressed tonight?
We'll see if the applicant can address that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, ma'am, would you mind coming back forward and get to the microphone so we can hear what your name was again?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
You want me to say it again?
Please.
Oh, okay.
Just for the record.
Okay, so I just moved into the area a few weeks ago.
Just what your, just your name.
My name is Susan Kaplan, C-A-P-L-I-N.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it?
Perfect, thank you.
I guess an address.
You want my address? My address is 1991 Beacon Hill Drive.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, anyone else? Okay, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hello, my name is Greg Gamble, and I want to thank staff, engineering, planning, for their endurance in putting together the plan of services and all the hard work. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'd like for him to address, well, you go.
Well, I think you'll probably address the question that came up for the next item.
Next, okay.
Item seven.
I thought it might be appropriate to the development plan, but happy to address it now if you need me to.
Sure. Why don't we wait till the next item?
I'll wait.
Okay, is there a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I just have one comment on the financial impact, I don't think it talks about how much the city is going to need to pay for things like, well, just waste, you know, waste collection and things like that. So it does say some of the things that both the developer and the city will be responsible for, but it really doesn't talk about the financial impact. It's really just saying what fees are required.
Well, I guess my question would be, just real quick, is that not a part of the approval process, whether we would agree to or not? Isn't that not a consideration? I just thought it was part of the formula that was used.
I've never seen it before.
The financial impact is something that we've been doing probably only for the last two annexations, and we haven't been doing a lot of annexations over the last several years, so the financial impact is something that we wanted to look at, to show the, whether the annexation really benefited us or not. We believe this one does.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number six, and you're right, we need to wait till item seven probably to address the comments, but item six is ordinance 2014-45, to be entitled an ordinance to zone 11.88 acres, specific development residential district, SDR 1.6. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant proposes nineteen detached, single-family homes on 11.88 acres. The proposed density is 1.6 units per acre. This is slightly higher than the adjacent neighborhoods, Ridgeway and Cross Creek are mostly one-acre lots. However, the original plan had twenty-two homes, this one has nineteen. Staff believes nineteen homes at 1.6 units per acre is not ideal, but certainly reasonable for this site, and consistent with the land use plan. Therefore, staff issues a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience wants to speak to this item? All right, I see none. Yeah, please. State your name again, if you don't mind, and address.
Name and address, okay, John Manley, 2014 Beacon Hill Drive. So, I mean, are we allowed to actually ask a question, not under the rules, there's no ground rules set at the beginning, so...
The, you can address a question, and we'll try to answer it, but not, we're not going to have conversation back and forth, we'll just...
Got it. Well, I guess I would like the board taking into consideration what was just said, that it was not ideal to have 1.6 homes per acre, even though it seems to be that it's something that's being proposed, so I'd like to ask the board to take this into consideration, to think that every house around the neighborhood is basically have one acre, one home, and I think would really denature the way the neighborhood actually looks. The reason we bought our house on 2014, which I can point on the map, which is right here, is basically for the wonderful view that we actually have now, and I'm also interested in finding out if there's any plan to put some kind of privacy around that grayed-out area, and along with all the flooding things that will be discussed later, but those were my two points that I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, anyone else? All right, then I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, these things are really more for the development plan.
Yes, yes.
The comments will be for the next item.
Yeah, they're, you're right, they're appropriate for item seven. Is there someone representing the applicant?
My name is Greg Gamble, and appreciate your consideration of this item, of this rezoning tonight. We will address the zone density in the development plan, but with this specific type of zoning, the density threshold is at 1.6, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. The land use plan says that single-family residential homes is appropriate as infill on this particular piece of property. Along with that, the zoning ordinance says there are certain transitional features, that if your lots are certain sizes, if they're slightly smaller than the adjacent properties, less than seventy-five percent, then by employing those transitional features into the development plan, that that property and the future development would be, or could be considered appropriate. And that's what we've done with the development plan... And that's what we've done with the development plan, and I'll talk more about that in just a minute. But the compatibility with what's being proposed through this rezoning and the homes surrounding this site has maybe more to do with the price point that the builder and the developer are planning to deliver here. The, we use estate homes in Franklin to describe those homes that are side-loaded, homes that are on lots that are anywhere from 80 to, 80 foot wide to one acre in size. And that's really what this is. It talks, it speaks to the compatibility of the architecture. The square footage of these homes will be larger than the homes that are around it. There will be a landscape buffer and berming around the backside and the entire perimeter of this lot, making this development appropriate as infill in this particular location. But happy to answer any questions that you might have about this rezoning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. Item seven, Resolution 2014-96 to be entitled a resolution approving a development plan for October Park PUD subdivision, located at 1100 Ridgeway Drive. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the applicant just mentioned, the proposed lot sizes are significantly smaller than the lots on Ridgeway and Cross Creek, which means, as the applicant stated, that an incompatible lot-size buffer is needed and is shown on the plan to help transition this PUD into the existing Ridgeway and Cross Creek neighborhoods. The incompatible lot-size buffer is a 50-foot buffer that goes along the perimeter of the development. It can be reduced to 37 feet if a fence is also installed, which is proposed for the eastern side. The layout does not meet the city's connectivity index, but staff understands that the site is landlocked by existing neighborhoods and Murphysboro Road to the north. The project does not pose a significant increase in traffic, but it should be noted that it will slightly exacerbate the difficulty to turn left out of Ridgeway Drive onto Murphysboro Road, which was a concern brought up at the neighborhood meeting. Drainage was also a concern brought up at the neighborhood meeting and has been a site issue that the applicant and staff have been working through. Staff issues favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
All right, thank you, staff. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? If you would, come forward. Looks like we do have somebody. All right. Nobody, so we'll move. You want to come back?
What does the term "working through it" actually mean?
Can you state your name again and your address?
Susan Kaplan, Mrs. Susan Kaplan. What does the term "working through" when you're talking about the problems that could occur?
We'll address, we'll address that, thank you. Okay? Anybody else? All right, is there a motion? I'm sorry. Keep forgetting the applicant. Can the applicant please come forward? You've got several things that have been requested to be answered. If you can address each of those, I would appreciate it.
I brought a board of the master plan, and I'll turn this around for you so you can see as well. It's positioned so that Murphysboro Road is to the top. Here and here. Along the boundaries of the property, we have a 50-foot incompatible use buffer on all lots, with exceptions of 18 and 19, where we'll have, it'll be reduced by 25% to 37.5 feet with the addition of a fence located in the rear yard. Right, and that's along the entire areas of the property. That's where the, this buffer will be located. Within that buffer, we'll have 16 trees and 40 shrubs every 100 feet, a part of the landscape buffer requirements for incompatible use. So that's a part of the screening that will be around the entire edge of the property. Currently, water flows from the south toward Murphysboro Road. Right along here is a drainage, this is the drainage conveyance and all the water's flowing to. So right here's the conveyance, and all of the water is currently flowing in this direction. We'll have a berm along the back of the property that will route the water diagonally to the north. There will be another berm along this side, which will direct any water coming across the property this way into the detention area that's located here, into water quality area that's located here along Ridgeway Drive before it enters into the conveyance. Currently, there's water that she flows across onto the adjacent properties. And we are establishing controls within these buffer areas that prevent that water from, in the future, traversing across this property, that it will be captured whether it's in the roadway and taken to the facility or to the detention areas, or taken along the berms to the detention areas. So again, those buffers that are, berms that are put in here are pushing the water to the outside edges. And then the water will go through the buffer area alongside the berm to the detentions on either side. So those controls, once put in place, really do leave the site in a better condition, leave these neighbors in a better condition than they're currently today. Eric, do you have anything that you want to add to that? Did I summarize that? With that, I believe I answered the questions. If there are any other, I'm happy to answer those.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
I did attend the neighborhood meeting and I know that a number of people spoke about the water coming across this particular area and going over to Cross Creek. And I'm trusting that what was, is proposed, is going to basically take care of that problem because you're, everything must drain onto your property, right?
This is a solution with the berms, one, to provide additional screening and buffering. But it's also a solution we've been working with engineering staff on to resolve this issue. Yes, ma'am?
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. Item number eight, ordinance 2014-46 to be entitled ordinance to rezone 19.11 acres from low residential R1 to specific development variety of district SDX 2.5 dash, or slash, 36,480. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use development consisting of office space and attached residential on 19.11 acres from R1 to SDX 2.5 dash 36,480. The applicant is proposing to build two office buildings of 18,240 square feet, each fronting Franklin Road, and two condominium buildings towards the rear of the site with a total unit count of 48. The site has substantial environmental constraints with Branch Creek running through the middle of the site and hillside overlay towards the rear of the property. We did receive a letter from a concerned citizen and that letter has been distributed to you. Staff recommends favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? If you would, please come forward. All right, I see none, and we will entertain the applicant. They would come forward, please.
Hello, my name is Blake Turner. I'm with T-Score Engineering, and I'm here tonight with Tim Turner, T-Score Engineering, and Paul Bass, B3 Studios. We'd first off like to thank you for consideration and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? All right, I see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. Number nine, Resolution 2014-97 to be entitled a resolution approving a development plan for Branch Creek Crossing PUD subdivision. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use development consisting of two office buildings of 18,240 square feet each, with a total of 36,480 square feet, and two condominium buildings with 48 residential units. The two office buildings will front Franklin Road with a condominium buildings located towards the rear of the property. There are significant environmental concerns on the property with Branch Creek going through the middle of the site and the hillside overlay to the rear of the property. The land use plan does support this use and this use is consistent with adjacent land uses. We did, and we did receive a letter from a concerned citizen and that letter has been given to you. There are two modifications of standards on the, on the project. The first one is section 5.9.12, request to allow, the request to allow the loading areas to be located to the side of the condominium buildings in that specific area due to the parking garage and topography behind the condominium building. The second modification of standard is section 5.3.6, and it's a request to allow off-street parking between a building wall containing the primary entrance and the primary street the building fronts for a non-residential or mixed-use structure in a traditional area due to the existing underground utilities and utility easements in that area. Staff recommends favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? All right, I see none, and is there someone representing the applicant?
Hello, Blake Turner, T-Score Engineering. Happy to answer any questions or comments at this time.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I did, who is going to answer questions, did he say? He would answer questions?
Yeah, let me get a motion first, if you can, and then we'll do that. Is there a motion and a second?
Move for approval. Second.
Moved to second, okay, Ms. Peterson?
I know that people have been concerned about the traffic and that is mentioned here. I did not realize that the hillside there was basically del roseau. And I know that you're not going to be building on the hillside, but still, that is a type of soil that has bad, let me see how to say it, bad problems out in that area on Franklin Road. And so you definitely want to stay off of that. Some of the other areas down there had, many years ago, buildings built on them that at least one slid down the hill. So as I say, that's one of the good things about having our hillside ordinance. But I wasn't aware that that particular soil was there until I saw this. As far as I'm concerned, I think the parking in the front, you know, mirrors kind of what's across the street there. So I don't know exactly why we're saying that that needed to be behind the, behind the buildings. Where it might be appropriate downtown. I don't, I don't necessarily know that that's as important in other areas.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify my motion, if I may. Just, I want to clarify this motion for approval with staff conditions.
Okay. All right, is, who's second?
Would you have to?
We do those one at a time, don't we?
And, and the modification of standards?
I thought we were going to do those one at a time.
One at a time? Okay.
Okay, so the motion has been amended and the second agrees with that amendment, so we're still on the main, the main motion. So we have modification of standards. We just have one, no, two modification standards, is that correct? Okay, let's start with the first. Staff, if you could kind of outline the first modification of standard again?
Sure. The first modification of standard, they're asking for the loading area to be on the side of the condominium building as opposed to towards the rear based on the site layout and the topography.
Okay. And does staff agree with that?
And staff recommends approval.
Okay, all right. Then I will entertain an amendment to the main motion for modification standard number one.
I move to amend.
Second.
For modification of standard number one.
Easy for you to say.
I second what he said.
Seconded, moved to seconded to approve a modification standard number one. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of modification standard number one being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. All right. Then modification number two, staff, if you could outline that as well, please.
The second modification is allowing for parking in between the Franklin Road and the primary building, the two office buildings, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Can you address quickly what Ms. Peterson was saying? Didn't see the reason that we had to do that.
Sure. Because it's a traditional area. That was, that was a traditional development standard.
I understand that, but my point is, I don't know why we still, we have that in traditional areas that are not necessarily traditional.
Got you. Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion then for modification of standard number two.
Move for approval? Second.
Modification number two.
Okay, moved to seconded for modification of standard number two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. We're back to the main motion. Any other discussion on the main motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. We're approved. Item number 10. Ordinance 2014-40 to be entitled ordinance to rezone 4.89 acres from specific development variety of district SDX 0-0 to general commercial district. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning removes the split zoning on the property at the northeast corner of Crowder's Parkway and Liberty Pike. Planning supports this rezoning.
Okay. All right, anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? Okay, I see none. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Good evening, Gary Vogon with Kaiser Vogon Design representing the applicant. We just respectfully request your approval and happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have any motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved to seconded, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. Resolution 2014-95 to be entitled a resolution approving a development plan for the Franklin Housing Authority Reddick Street Development Phase II PUD subdivision with one modification of standard. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This plan was originally approved as a concept plan in May 2010, but changes to Phase II of the plan required it to be revised as a development plan. The major change is that one external access point is being removed. Topography at that access point required substantial grading, so the plan's connectivity was slightly reconfigured to remove that connection point. The number of units has not changed, neither has the overall layout concept, so planning is supportive of this development plan with conditions. This project has one modification of standards. The modification of standards is for the reduction of parking to 2.2 spaces per dwelling unit. Due to the intended users of the site and because the location of the property provides a decreased dependency on a personal vehicle, planning supports this modification of standards request.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? All right, I see none, then someone representing the applicant? If you could come forward.
I believe you have someone who wants to speak.
There was somebody?
Yes.
My name is Howard Lane. I'm a resident of Straw Street. I've been there 38 years in my lifetime. Franklin night, and I want to speak on behalf of the drainage probably have there. I've been having that for years. Three years ago, I spoke to y'all about this drainage problem and it was told to me that y'all were going to start it before you started building. Nothing happened yet, and I appreciate it. If y'all would correct this drainage problem, I've been suffering for years. 2010, I could feel her when she told me that she went through a flood 2010. Since then, I got all new flows and I don't want this to happen again. I appreciate if y'all do. I appreciate if y'all do something about pour drainage on that area. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, if the applicant can come forward.
My name is Jason Bruyetta with Little John. I'm representing the applicant Franklin Housing Authority and their development partner in Michael's organization. And if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval with staff conditions. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have a question Mr. Lane brought up about this drainage. We all know you put more asphalt, that's just going to add to it. So, what has the applicant, the developer, has that been taken into consideration? Because I would, as much as I want this beautiful development, I will never, ever, ever support something that does not address issues that already exist before we pile something new on. So, I'd like someone to please address that.
We've gone through all the drainage calculations and we will design with our final site plan to have a net increase of, we'll meet all the stormwater regulations, so we have a negative or no impact off-site per the local regulations.
Okay, so now, what he basically just said is they're not going to make it any worse than what it is. My question is though, because we, that's part of our duties as a city to make sure that, you know, and I agree, I understand what he's saying, it's not his job to correct this. My question is though, before we do this, what has been or hasn't even been looked into? Is there anything, you know, what's, what can we tell Mr. Lane? Is my question. Because he's right, he has been here before.
Correct. I might have to defer to the engineering department if they are aware of anything that's been done in this area in terms of stormwater.
Honestly, I'm not familiar with the stormwater problem in the area, but we will look into it following this to try to see what issues they're having out there and try to address those.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, Ms. Peterson?
I just, I noticed that there was a quest for modification of standards to reduce the parking there and this is not like the Phase One, which was senior citizens and everything. And I just wondered what the, even maybe what the housing authority has had as a, has it had experience with having enough parking places or not. You know, I drive by and I see some places that have a great number of cars and some that do not, but as I say, is there any experience that the housing authority could say here that about their parking?
The housing authority requested that we provide two spaces per unit and we've exceeded what they have asked as a minimum for their parking. We've gone through all the calculations and looked at the parking and they're in agreement with what we're showing. We've worked through, that's our client, so.
But it does not meet the city's requirement.
Correct.
Well, as I say, I just want to make sure that there are enough parking places. That's the only thing.
That is valid. If you drive down Natchez Street now, you'll see more than, more than two. I wonder about that myself. Weren't these touted, and correct me because I'm getting a little confused. Were these not touted as workforce, is this not workforce anymore? Are these not touted as workforce housing? Because with that, that brings a different demographic also.
I'm going to defer to one of my clients to clarify that, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Johns with Franklin Housing Authority. At this time, they're all public housing or tax credit housing. There will not be workforce housing included in this particular development. Long-term, we hope to do that, but at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Well, everything went so well with Phase One. I think that everybody has been so pleased with that. But this is different. This is different.
All right, well, let's address that modification standard before we vote on the main motion. So, we have a request for a reduction of parking requirements. Can I get a motion and a second for that modification standard?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the modification standard?
I do need to say for the, I never vote for these. I will in this case since it is public housing only, not workforce. Otherwise, it would be a no.
Okay.
I agree, I'm reluctant, but.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the modification of standard number one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Back to the main motion. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, I have a conflict on the next two items, so I'm going to pass the chair to Roger.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a statement for the record, please. I'm related to the applicant, part of the applicant that owns that property, but I have no financial interest. And I've asked the city attorney, I'd like to continue to vote on this project, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number twelve. Ordinance 2014-41 to be entitled an ordinance to rezone 4.48 acres from central commercial district CC to specific development variety district SDX thirty-three point three slash thirty-two thousand slash one-one-two for various properties located along Main Street East, First Avenue North, Bridge Street, and Second Avenue North. And staff?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I wanted to clarify that the entitlements published on the staff report were published in error. The actual entitlements are thirty-four point one seven dwelling units per acre, thirty-three thousand six hundred and fifty square feet of non-residential square footage, and a hundred and fifteen hotel keys. This rezoning coincides with the development plan for Harpeth Square on one of the majority of one-city blocks in downtown Franklin. The land use plan supports a mix of uses as laid out in the entitlements and the density proposed brings a new housing type to the downtown, thereby increasing the diversity in the housing stock. So, planning supports this rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in the public would like to address this item on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address and make your comments.
Good evening. My name is Mindy Tate and I live at eleven fifteen Carton Lane in Franklin. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen of Franklin since nineteen eighty-three and I'm speaking in favor of Harpeth Square's rezoning request and their later development plan. I was asked by Mary Pierce of the Heritage Foundation to express their regret at being unable to attend and speak in favor of this as well as they were involved in an event tonight with the Heritage Foundation. My history on Second Avenue North dates back to my first day in Franklin when I went to work at the Review Appeal located at one-twenty-one Second Avenue North in nineteen eighty-three. At that time, Second Avenue was a beehive of activity with Middle Tennessee Electric, Franklin Gas on full-service insurance on either side of the Review Appeal. Today, my office overlooks Second Avenue North and the empty lot where Middle Tennessee Electric once stood. I encounter pedestrians almost daily standing at the corner of Second Avenue and East Main Street wondering how they step through the looking glass of historic Franklin as they stare down the uncharacteristically uncharming Second Avenue North. Harpeth Square represents an eighty million dollar investment in our community by individuals who have not only a financial interest, but the interest of being residents themselves. With the planned boutique hotel, luxury apartments, and retail space, it certainly does represent a significant change for that area. But Franklin has long needed a hotel in its core for those who wish to stay in the city's historic center, craving an experience not fulfilled by our existing quality hotels. The change it brings to Second Avenue will be to revitalize what is now and was before this plan was put forth, a brown field in the heart of our beautiful historic town. It most definitely will bring additional vehicles to downtown Franklin, but I believe those generated by a mixed-use development of residential, a hotel, and some retail and office space will be less than what could be generated by a blanket of commercial development which could occupy this space currently. I'm an urban planning minor from MTSU. That's what brought me to Franklin as well as the newspaper business, so I love this kind of thing to see this. The suggestions by the city to lessen the impact of the proposed four stories of the development on the corners are a great idea. Although the highest point on the development appears to me to be the existing Landmark Bank's clock tower, which please don't ever turn the chimes on, ever, please. It's my offices in that building. I hear weekly from individuals who would like to live in downtown Franklin but are unable to find housing which meets their needs of a one- or two-bedroom apartment or condo. Some want to rent, some want to own, each to their own choice and each as the market allows. Most would find the access to adjacent retail, both along the city's Main Street and planned as part of Harpeth Square as a key reason to make Second Avenue and Harpeth Square their home. Earlier this year, I led Franklin Tomorrow's delegation to Carmel, Indiana, a city that has seen major redevelopment of its downtown core through mixed-use development without damage to housing prices in nearby neighborhoods or to the detriment of existing businesses. In Carmel, the city works in partnership with the developer to offset costs associated with parking structures and other infrastructure needs and I hope the city and council will consider the options, this option with the Harpeth Square development. As a longtime citizen of Franklin and a fond part-time resident or daytime resident of Second Avenue North, I would ask for your support of the Harpeth Square rezoning tonight and their development plan and a positive recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mindy. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, then I'll call on the applicant.
Hi, my name is Greg Gamble, representing the applicant and here tonight with the representatives of Harpeth Associates, the applicants for this development, as well as Eric Gardner with Cannon and Cannon and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have for us regarding this request.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item number thirteen. Resolution 2014-92 to be entitled a resolution approving a development plan for the Harpeth Square PUD subdivision with seven modifications of standards. MOS one is setbacks. MOS two, facade occupancy within front setback. MOS three, facade occupancy within side setback of corner lots. MOS four, facade design variation. MOS five is a parkland dedication. MOS six, tree canopy preservation. MOS seven, festival lights. Located at various properties within the block of Main Street East, First Avenue North, Bridge Street, and Second Avenue North by the City of Franklin, Tennessee. Call on staff?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. First, let me reiterate the citizen's comment from earlier that planning applauds this developer for bringing this unique project to downtown, one that will support our local businesses and will provide diversity in our downtown housing stock. The scale of this project is something that has rarely been considered within downtown Franklin, so that it is imperative that intense scrutiny be placed on the massing and the architecture of the project to ensure its compatibility with downtown Franklin and to ensure that it does not adversely affect the existing character of downtown. The applicants have generally been responsive to the comments and critiques of the plan and staff feels that the plan before you today is a much better project than what was first presented to the city. There are a couple outstanding architectural conditions that staff would like to see resolved and have created conditions of approval to require these revisions. One condition is that the corner of First and Main have deeper setbacks to further comply with the required transitional features. The second condition is that a corner cachet be added to the side elevation of the hotel facing the Heritage Foundation Building, again, to help further comply with transitional features. Planning Commission should be aware that the zoning ordinance specifically states that four stories can be permitted in this character area so long as it is applied through a PUD development plan which utilizes transitional features. While staff feels that the intent of transitional features is being met on the majority of the building's massing, it does not meet the strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance in several places. Planning Commission should also be aware that this plan does not meet the historic district's design guidelines, which are more stringent than the zoning ordinance. While the applicants have met several times with the Historic Zoning Commission, this commission does not provide their certificate of appropriateness until after a development plan has been approved and a full set of elevations can be created with the site plan. Therefore, unless the plan complies with the historic district's design guidelines, which it may not right now, this development plan may require revisions by the Historic Zoning Commission, which may or may not have to come back to this group for re-review. Overall, staff is recommending approval of this development plan with conditions. This plan has seven modifications of standards. If staff is recommending approval, staff requests that you look at your staff report for its reasoning. If you have questions on any of these, we will be happy to address them in discussions. Request number one, request to provide setbacks that are respectful to the existing neighborhood buildings and to align them to form the building setback line. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards. Request number two, request for final plans to conform to the development plan PUD as approved by BOMA for the percentage of primary building wall occupying the front property line. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards. Request number three, request for final plans to conform to the development plan PUD as approved by BOMA for the percentage of primary building wall occupying the side street property line. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards. Request number four, request the minimum facade variation every fifty feet. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards. Request number five, request to satisfy parkland dedication requirements with the donation of property located at fourteen sixteen Columbia Pike and any shortfall in the total parkland dedication fee amount to be paid as fees and lip. Parks has confirmed with staff they do not wish to accept this property for future park space and they further feel that it is too far from this development to meet the intent of the parkland dedication requirement. Parks has requested that a trail system along the development and the river be instead used to meet the parkland dedication requirement. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this modification of standards. Request number six, request to save only the trees identified on the development plan. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards. Request number seven, request to put up festival lights as accents for courtyards specifically on Main Street. Several businesses within downtown Franklin have made similar requests for festival lights and the city's stance is that these are not allowed and that there are no exceptions to this rule. Staff recommends denial of this modification of standards. The plan also has four design modifications which the planning commission will have to vote on. Design modifications are approved by planning commission only and they do not require the approval of BOMA. Design modification one, request for the building length of five hundred and seventy-three feet along its longest portion where the maximum length allowed by the zoning ordinance is two hundred feet. Staff recommends approval. Design modification two, request the use of flat roofs versus the required pitch roofs for multifamily structures. Staff recommends approval. Design modification three, request the minimum facade variation every fifty feet. Staff recommends approval. Design modification four, request a maximum of five pillars for use on the building facades. Staff recommends approval. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Please, if so, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address, please.
Stokie Borak, representing Saint Philip Catholic Church, one thirteen Second Avenue South here in Franklin. We appreciate the time of the planning commission and the attention and detail and sensitivity of the developer in the area and look forward to working with them. The main concern, the overall concern we have is the entrance and exit, entry and exit of the garage, proposed garage, onto Main Street. We understand First Avenue and Second Avenue, but Main Street, being it's a major arterial, I think it's called. Right now, with the bank traffic, that's actually no problem just because it's just local bank traffic, but to have a major, major entry-exit to the garage onto Main Street, we just see concerns for pedestrians walking up and down the sidewalk as well as traffic congestion on Main and possibility of traffics with accidents with that much in and out on Main Street itself.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak to this item?
My name is Joel Tomlin. My family owns Landmark Booksellers and the building there at 114 East Main Street. I'm not certain that this is the moment, after watching how this works, you may have two or three more things coming up here, but I've spoken to Mr. Heller, he knows, and Mr. Frank's, I am a, I've been very outspoken about how we need hotel rooms in downtown Franklin. As a matter of fact, I believe we don't need one hotel, I believe we need three hotels. And the reason I say that is we, for ten years, in operating the bookstore, come in contact with a great deal of tourists. As a matter of fact, the majority of our business is tourism. For the past ten years, we've been listening to people come through our door and say, "Where can we stay in downtown Franklin?" Since the Nashville Convention Center, new convention center's been built, we've been having people come through the door now saying, "We can't even find a room at 65 until we get south of Patensville Road." So, we desperately need hotel space in downtown Franklin, and I'm, we are very excited about the prospect of this development being done around us. That said, at the most recent meeting in December, when the developers and Greg had a fabulous graphics on the wall showing a 3D view of these buildings, it hit me for the first time, the mass of this building. You're talking about a building in the downtown historic district that will have a footprint of somewhere around three and a half, four acres. If it goes up four stories, I'm very concerned about that. I left that meeting that night, walked up and down Main Street, looked at the other buildings in Franklin, and really and truly, most, the, the scale of the buildings in the historic district is basically two stories and on an occasion, three. The two buildings that are an exception to that rule are the Grain Bins and First Tennessee Bank. The next morning, I went online and Googled Town Square Franklin, Tennessee. Many pictures on Google Images for downtown Franklin Public Square. Not one of those pictures I found show First Tennessee Bank. Why is that? I would suggest that that's because that's not the attractive corner of our square. So, think about something the size of First Tennessee Bank sitting on three and a half acres in the middle of downtown Franklin. Think about this building that we're in right now, which is one story, if it was as high as First Tennessee, what it would look like? And it's not as big, it's, I don't believe it's sitting on three and a half acres of ground space here. So, my, our concern, most especially with our building, we, we, I don't know if you all realize this, but they now believe our building was built between 1806 and 1808. If in fact that's correct, it predates Masonic Hall by 20 years, predates St. Paul's by 20 years. It's easily the most important historic building in Franklin, and I know they've been sensitive to that and, and wanting to plan around that, and we appreciate that. But again, we are very concerned about the height, very excited about the project, very excited about the project, but very concerned about the height issue. And I think you're also going to probably see another proposal coming from the other corner over there on Dotson's, and I'm sure that's going to be a height issue, and I think that the cities at a crossroads at this point, and you all are going to have to decide if a hundred years from now, if the scale of the historic district is going to remain as it is right now, or if it's going to go up, because this, this proposal definitely proposes that. And in the downtown historic district, we'd like to see it stay as close to the scale of all the other buildings, with the exception of the two or three that have, have turned out to be, most people would agree, mistakes, and so, that's where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will call on the applicant.
Hello, my name is Greg Gamble, representing the applicant, and I have an easel and a few boards that are from the development plans. There's only nothing new on the boards, but it shows it in a little bit bigger view. And if I may, I'd like to just address a couple of the comments that we've heard tonight. Harpeth Square is a unique development. It's also a very unique opportunity. Very rarely do you have an opportunity in a town such as Franklin with the history and the richness of, of culture and community that we have to propose the development of four, four and a half acres of property in what really is kind of the heart and soul of, of, of that historic district. For the past couple of years, as we've worked on the master plan and the, the development concept, we have strived to listen, we've strived to be flexible. This plan, when it was first presented to the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Planning Commission at the workshop, December of 2013, we were proposing over 200 residential units, proposing 120 hotel rooms, and around 30,000 to 40,000 square foot of retail. That intensity has been reduced. The plan proposed to you today is for 151 residential units, 115 boutique hotel rooms, and retail uses that are really designed and, and that will cater to that residential, the hotel, such as potentially a day spa, fitness center, et cetera. We've taken, as I said, careful consideration with input from the residents and the business owners within the, the neighborhood area. We've had three neighborhood meetings. We have had two presentations to the Historic Zoning Commission, again, looking for that input. We've been working with staff on transition around the block, street by street, view by view. Today, this property could be developed differently in the CC District. Today, it could be developed with three-story residential, I mean, you know, three-story residential, three-story commercial office, three-story retail buildings within the heights that we're talking about here. We're asking for four stories because floor to floor for residential is only 10 feet. If you looked at the Tennessee Bank Building, which is taller than the buildings we're proposing here, it's only three stories in height, but the height of that building is taller because in the commercial structure, the floor to floor is much taller. Working with 906 Studio, they have had careful consideration because of the understanding that they have for, one, the historic architecture here in Franklin, but also the community's respect for that. We're not designing historic architecture here. We're designing architecture with, it's kind of, it's grounded in the historic principles, the same rhythms, the same proportions, the same rhythm of the windows and the doors. And it's that timeless quality that makes this architecture appropriate for this block. We have multiple modification of standards. A lot of the zoning regulation was written within the downtown core very specifically, and because the uniqueness of this project, there were a lot of, there was a need to address that uniqueness through those requests for modifications. I'd like to address each one of those, one by one, as the items brought up, but with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding this request.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gamble. I'd like to start with a, a motion for the item, and, and with a motion and a second, then we'll deal with each of seven separate modifications of standards and four design modifications individually. So, I'd like to entertain for a motion.
Move for approval with staff conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so.
Can I ask just a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am, certainly.
Because the modification standards are going to take a little while. One of them is very minor. I noticed here that it said for the bank building, zero parking places?
That is the zoning for any existing structure in downtown Franklin. The existing parking requirement is zero. So, what we're doing in that statement is simply saying that it's an existing structure, the existing parking requirement is zero.
Well, it did have parking, though. It does have parking at the present time.
Correct, but it's not its own required parking space. I, I know it's a little strange, we talked about this quite a bit, and how to word that, address that in the, in the documentation, but that is the.
But that means, then, that the parking places that were part of that site will be gone.
We have, we have parking in addition to the required parking, so we're trying to account for the, just the practical needs of the bank.
Which would be? It's a 12, how, how big is it, 12? 12,000 square feet?
So, for an office building, a bank in downtown Franklin, it would be about, I believe it's three and a half, 3.33 spaces per thousand, so.
So, how much?
Thirty-six spaces.
As I say, it seemed relatively small, but, but I'm surprised it's 36 spaces. Are, are you including that? I mean, there are no, there are no parking, there's no parking around it. There's no parking, there will be no parking, based on what I see here.
The parking for the bank will be allocated in, within the parking garage with direct pedestrian connections out to the bank. So, from the parking garage, you have pedestrian routes directly out of these access corridors over into the bank. We have customer parking for the bank here, we're providing on-street parking within the, this section of the plan.
Like you said, customer parking for the bank.
This located here, behind.
And how many of the spaces do you have?
There are five spaces there. There are four spaces that are parallel to the jewel box building here. There's the teller here, we'll have on-street parking on Main Street.
So, maybe six?
And the rest of the, well, now, the bank is half that square footage. There's office above on the second floor, that's also a part of that square footage.
Well, I could see how the, the people who work there would park in the parking garage, I suppose.
They would, covered, uncovered parking.
Okay, and as I say, that's, that's kind of a very small one. Another thing is, and this may have been answered before, but service trucks supplying the hotel and retail?
We have a service loading area that's right here. Service trucks can pull all the way through the garage, and we'll have a loading zone right here. The trash compactor and trash area is on the bottom floor of the garage, located in that corner there.
And they, how will they get back out? If you don't mind my.
It's all the way through.
Oh, okay. So, that opens up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, and I also noticed that apparently the new flood or firm maps.
Yes, ma'am.
Will show that there's a part of this in the flood plain, in the flood.
We've looked at that. We are currently in discussions with Tom Allen with Neil Schaefer. Tom is an expert in the industry and an expert in middle Tennessee for flood studies. Matter of fact, he did the analysis for Bicentennial Park for the city as the city's consultant. He's very familiar with the Harpeth in this area. We have documentation, aerial photographs, onsite photographs of the flood from 2012, the height of that, 2010, excuse me, that show where the water's elevation came to. That documentation locates the floodwaters below the current 100-year floodplain level. FEMA is proposing that it be raised an additional two feet with major impacts to properties throughout downtown Franklin. This FEMA has not started their public review process yet, they haven't started the public input process. We've asked Tom Allen to take these items and these issues to FEMA to review their analysis that established this higher floodplain. We don't know the results of that today. Obviously, we're very curious as to how and what those impacts might be, but again, we have to take that one step at a time and work with FEMA on that item.
Well, now, now that I'm looking at your picture right there, at the, where First Avenue North goes into Bridge Street.
Yes.
You show trees over there, it's basically a drop-off, isn't it?
Well, we've shifted First Avenue down, away from the river. We were making room in through here for the eight-foot Greenway Trail, but we're also having to react to an increased radius around that curve for traffic flow. We've added an additional five feet for a sidewalk. We're bringing that entire retaining wall back off of First Avenue, so you have better visibility. We've been working very closely with engineering staff to improve the radius, the turn there, and that whole traffic movement as it moves around the corner and becomes Bridge Street.
So, so you're basically relocating the curve?
Correct.
Is that it? Okay, well, that, that will make it very interesting for an arterial now that gets offsets.
Yes.
The, the last thing is just some comments that I've heard, and I kind of agree with this, about the glass on the corner, you know, that's, I guess that's a matter of opinion, but as I say, I've heard, I've heard some comments about that, and I also have reservation about that, and I'm not normally a person that.
These, and these elevations don't have final approval from the Historic Zoning Commission, we're still working through the final designs here. What 906 Studios is looking at is creating a lighter, more transparent fourth floor along this edge. We're recessing the fourth floor back along Main Street. Here's where staff had made the comment, that we're going to work with them on, on recessing that back a little bit further. We're going to have on the ground floor here at the corner of First and Main will be a restaurant location, restaurant site. Our plan today is to have a little outdoor bar area on the top floor, on the third floor, looking out over the city. The bar would be behind the glass along this area, so you'd have fantastic views down Main Street. Now, there is a chance that that might not happen if we don't have the right restaurant operator and, and that doesn't work out, but that's the direction we would like to head with that, and that's what's a part of our development plan approval today.
Thank you.
All right, we'll handle the modifications of standards then, one at a time. The first one, modification of standards number one is a request to provide setbacks that are respectful of the existing neighborhood buildings and to align with them to form the building setback line. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Modification of standards number two, request for final plans to conform to the development plan PUD as approved by BOMA for the percentage of primary building wall occupying the front property line. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Modification of standards number three, request for final plans to conform to the development plan PUD as approved by BOMA for the percentage of primary building wall occupying the side street property line. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Most, modification of standards number four, request a minimum facade variation every 50 feet. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Modification of standard number five, request to satisfy park. Modification of standard number five, request to satisfy parkland dedication requirements with a donation of property located at 1416 Columbia Pike, 16,900 square feet, and any shortfall in the total parkland dedication fee amount to be paid as fees in lieu.
Recommend disapproval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to recommend disapproval. Is there any discussion?
If I may, I'd like to comment on that, Chairman.
Okay.
We are proposing something probably a little bit unique. One of the owners of Harpeth Associates, Mr. Rod Heller, would like to speak a little bit about the proposal that we would like to bring to the Alderman and to the Planning Commission for your consideration.
Thank you. My name is Rod Heller. We live at 1344 Carnton Lane. I understand that the staff has recommended disapproval of the proposed dedication of the property in Columbia Avenue. That is a so-called car wash property, which we acquired to preserve it about six months ago when it was proposed to be developed. I understand the opposition to that proposal arises because the current parkland arrangements envision largely residential use, and we're awaiting, all of us, a proposal for proper use or expanded, perhaps, use of parkland. Our comments look forward to that. I personally hope that the city will, given the focus on historic tourism and the effort to develop sites and that character in town, expand parkland. But my purpose today is not, is to bring to your attention a different factor. Ninety percent of the cost of that car wash, almost $300,000, was from nonprofit foundations. That profit, the property will not be developed. We will either donate it or sell it to a historic preservation group. But the purpose of presenting this to the city was, in effect, to give the city a two-for-one break. If this car wash were to be accepted by the city, and it's the fifth, fourth or fifth most important Civil War site here in Franklin, Harpeth would reimburse Wagner Line Partnership, which owns the existing entity. So that $290,000 would be available again to the foundations. We are agreeable to use that $290,000 for further nonprofit purposes in Franklin, either for the Vicentennial Park, the Riverwalk, or the like. And so, in effect, by accepting this donation or part of the parkland dedication fee, Franklin would get $580,000 of donation rather than turning down the $290,000 proposal. So it's that two-to-one aspect of utilization of nonprofit funding that I wanted to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission, and if the staff recommendation is carried forward, we will present this to the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, and one of the reasons that I was so quick to second Ms. Peterson's motion, I have a problem, and I talked about this before with the whole sidewalk ordinance. I sat on the Board of Mayor in Oliver for eight years, 1993 to 2001. It took a lot of, there was a lot of thought. There was a lot of research. There was a lot, there was a lot of meetings that took place, and we wanted to make sure that sidewalks were put in when people built new things, that parkland was dedicated, because there's, there's 151 residential units in this, and so, and, and the thought was not so that the city of Franklin could just have another park. The thought wasn't just so the city of Franklin could have another sidewalk. The thought was that that area would have more park, I mean, more parking, more parks, that that area would have more sidewalks. And I've seen us do this before, and it really bugs me. We have several places in town that should have new sidewalks now, but the developers were able to make a contribution to whatever fund that is and not have sidewalks. Defeats the whole purpose. I think it defeats the spirit of what was intended for that. Same way with the parkland. And I applaud you, the buying the parking lot, the whole concept of two-for-one, but I just think that we, we circumvent so many times the intent, the spirit of these ordinances that why have them? And so, I'm going to oppose, I oppose this, I will. I think that if that is a requirement for this development, it should be satisfied on this site, just like, like I said, I'll do a plug for the sidewalks. I don't think, I don't, I think we need to stop doing that, or why have the orders? Because we, the, the intent will never be fulfilled if we continue to do this.
Thank you.
I did not also say that the Parks Department also, as well as the staff, recommended denial.
Thank you, Ann. Any other commissioners have any comments on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say the economic benefit sometimes goes unanswered when an offer like that's made, so I would, I'm supportive of the modification requested. And I think that that needs to be highly considered, what Mr. Heller is mentioning.
I also support your request.
Okay.
Vice Chairman, may I add one?
I think we're, we're past. Anybody else have any comments or discussion? Okay, we have a motion to deny this request for modification of standards with a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
And if you would give me a show of hands, please, in favor of the motion to deny. Ms. Peterson, let's see. So we have three in favor of the motion to deny, and then all opposed to that motion, a show of hands, three, and I'm going to, I'm going to vote, so that'll be, that motion would pass then.
Are you voting for, again?
I'm sorry. I'm voting with, it was a tie, three, three to three.
Did you vote to approve them?
I vote, I voted to deny the motion.
Okay, so you voted with?
In favor of the request for modification.
Okay, so.
Is that correct?
It's a three to four vote, so now you're going to have to do a motion to approve.
Because the motion was to deny.
Okay, okay.
And that's what you say, you defeated the motion to deny, so now you need a motion to approve.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve that request for modification of standards then.
The commission wants to do, right.
Anybody?
Move to approve modification of standard number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for modification of standards. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
A show of hands? All, all, I'm not, I'm not, it's not a tie yet. All opposed?
Actually, the, the chairman can vote here.
So I would vote in favor of the motion.
You're not like the mayor, they can only vote in.
So the motion passes four to three then. Okay. Okay, modification of standards, request number six, a request to save only the trees identified on the development plans. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Modification of standards, request number seven, a request to put up festival lights as accents for courtyards specifically on Main Street. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to recommend denial.
A second.
You have a motion to recommend denial and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to recommend denial, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next we'll go into the design modifications. The first design modification request is, number one, a request for a building length of 573 feet at the longest portion, where the maximum length allowed by the zoning ordinance is 200 feet. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Design modification number two, requesting the use of flat roofs versus the required roof pitch between 3 to 12 and 12 to 12 for multifamily structures. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Design modification number three, requesting a minimum facade variation every 50 feet. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Design modification number four, requesting a maximum of five colors for use on the building facades. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you need to do the overall motion.
I'm sorry. I was getting ready to go home. Okay, so we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion?
The look and feel of the buildings is more through historic than here tonight, so if we have any issues, we should, as a body, we probably ought to attend that meeting.
Agreed. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Not going to do.
Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you, Roger. Sounds like having a whole meeting in and of itself. All right, item 14, ordinance 2014-42, to be entitled to ordinance to rezone 17.29 acres from general commercial to general office, and general office to specific development variety District SDX 3.39. Staff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning coincides with the Serena PUD development plan, and it appears to be noted that that name has, is subject to change, that Serena name has not been approved yet, but for purposes of this meeting, I'm going to use it. This proposal is less intense than what could be built currently under the general office and general commercial zonings on the property, and planning supports this less intense use next to an established neighborhood. However, staff is recommending an unfavorable recommendation to BOMA of the corresponding development plan due to several reasons, including noncompliance with recorded setbacks. Due to the significant changes that staff feels are required of the development plan to become in compliance with those recorded setbacks, staff is recommending disapproval of the rezoning until the issues with the development plan are resolved, and it is clear that the entitlements proposed could be accommodated on the site.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? All right, I see none. Is there someone representing the applicant?
My name is Greg Gamble, representing the applicant for Serena, AKA Williamson Square. We recognized at the work session, when we presented to BOMA and Planning Commission that we would have many of these issues tonight that we're talking about. The first one, we came to you last month, requesting, two months ago, that's right, requesting a plat approval for the removal of the 100-foot setback. Planning Commission agreed that this process should go forward first. This process to establish a development plan and a rezoning on this property. Upon approval of the development plan, we will bring back to the Planning Commission a plat that reflects the new buffer requirements for residential on this property. One comment that we have heard consistently from staff is that there is a, is that the, the architecture for the townhomes, the independent living piece of this property, does not conform to the garage standards, and we mentioned that at the, the work session as well. This is representative of what these townhomes are designed to, to look like. They have a two-car garage in the front, and this is predominantly for accessibility. The finished floor elevation is at relatively the same elevation as the finished floor elevation, well, the finished floor elevation of the garage is relatively the same level as the finished floor elevation of the house. It's for handicap accessibility, for wheelchairs. All doors within these will be three foot wide. All master bedrooms will be downstairs. They're two stories because they do have a second floor component, one or two bedrooms upstairs. This is a product that's not appropriate everywhere in Franklin. This is a product that is appropriate within the context of the proposed assisted living facility and its campus, and this relationship with the commercial to the front and the residential to the back. The alternative is to provide an alley along the landscape buffer with all the garage doors facing back to the residential to the north. Currently, the garage doors face the parking lot for the church. So we had made a conscious decision during the planning process to, one, create a more substantial buffer, I guess you could say, along the back, and reduce the activity of the residential adjacent to the existing residential. So that, that's the reason why the request is being proposed to you today and the modification of standards. We have two. One is that the garages face the drive, and two is that the garages have full two-car garage doors. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this request.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, move and second. Any discussion?
Yes, hold on for just a sec, because I want to.
Please.
It's totally. It sounds to me like there's so many problems, and correct me if I'm reading this wrong, that there are so many problems with, with what has been proposed, that staff feels like if we go ahead with the rezoning, that either it's going to take longer to be resolved or it won't be resolved, something. So I, I think we kind of need to, I, I really would like that addressed. I mean, I really would.
Sure. There are several issues with the development plan specifically that we have, that we can talk about at item number 15. As such, I think that the density proposed may change slightly with those changes. However, I do feel that there probably could be a plan that could be built with the entitlements as proposed. So I think the hard stance for staff would be to disapprove, but that there, it's not unreasonable to think that they could build within the entitlements as proposed.
So, but if we approve, let's see, this is why, if we approve the rezoning now, and it can't be, it's not worked out.
It's just a development.
All you're approving is the entitlements.
Entitlements, okay.
So if they, if they are entitled to a density of 3.39 but cannot meet that, they can build less.
Okay, got you.
It would be allowed to build less.
Okay, I got you.
All right, thanks.
There, there are some other things. Well, first of all, the, the garages definitely are the most dominant part of the front elevation here. I mean, the door is this big and the garage is that big. The other thing, though, I noticed here is talking about cul-de-sac requirements.
Ms. Peterson, I believe we're looking at items on item 15. We'll be talking about those in the next one.
Wait, just a minute.
Okay.
I'm on 14, I believe.
I know the front loaded garages are at modification of standard.
I'm sorry.
On item 15.
I beg your pardon.
That's okay, we'll talk about it in the next one.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me. But those two go together. I'm sorry, sorry.
All right, any other comments? All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Greg.
Yes.
With the way you've presented the layout of this development, again, recognizing which number we're on.
Right.
Does that still respect the one hundred-foot setback that existed in the existing plat?
It is not. The hundred-foot setback was applied when, because the property is currently zoned, it's actually split zoned, general office and general commercial. And with those particular uses, the Planning Commission at the time said that the hundred-foot buffer was the appropriate solution between the residential uses to the north and what would be future officer or general commercial. What we're proposing is to change that use, to change the zoning from general office and general commercial to a residential zone, which would be a more appropriate transition and therefore have a lesser buffer adjacent to the existing residential to the north. Now, that buffer would still exist at sixty, at fifty-six point five feet.
Or seventy-five?
It's a Class B buffer because it is a, considered mixed use, the, the assisted living facility is still considered a commercial use, so it has to be within a commercial zone. So that's why we're asking for SDX, which allows for both the residential townhomes and the assisted living facility. The buffer requirement then would be a Type B buffer, which is seventy-five feet, and we're reducing that twenty-five percent with the addition of the berm plant material, where we're going to be infilling plant material. We, we met a few weeks ago with Alderman Berger and the developer proposing this project and the adjacent neighbors that we back up to. So everyone was invited around the rear of the property.
But it was not a public meeting, it wasn't a neighborhood meeting, the way you had before?
It was not a required neighborhood meeting, but it was a, a meeting with just the adjacent properties. We wanted to meet with them and, and talk with them about this landscape buffer, and talked about where we would start infilling with landscape, where they thought that there were holes or things that needed to be addressed, and it was a very productive meeting.
Did you also talk about the drainage back there?
We did, yes. There are several residences there that have fences separating property lines that have debris that's been clogged up over time, and we talked about how that could be cleaned out and allow for positive flow of, of stormwater.
Amy, did you want to say something? Any other comments? All right, all in favor of item fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Both?
No.
Two votes no, motion passes. Item fifteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen dash ninety-three, to be entitled a resolution approving a development plan for the Serena PUD subdivision located at eleven twenty-seven Murphysboro Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said just before, in the rezoning presentation, planning is supportive of the uses on the site, and they are less intense than of what could be developed under the current general office and general commercial zoning. However, there are several unresolved issues with the proposed plan, and until they are resolved, staff cannot support this development plan. First issue, as we discussed, is the platted setback. There is a current platted setback of a hundred feet along the north property line, and this, this development plan proposes twenty-eight dwelling units within that platted setback. Until this, until this setback is replatted and approved at a shallow or depth, this development plan is in direct violation with a legal document defining setbacks for our property. The second issue is that the applicant has not yet obtained an access easement for the church site and does not show required turnaround at the terminus of the private drive. And that would be, I don't have a pointer, but along the west area of the property at the end of the dwelling units. Thank you, Paul. Staff has included a condition of approval to add such a turnaround and asked that the Planning position, the Planning Commission, consider enforcing this condition should they approve this development plan. Staff also has several concerns with the design modifications being proposed. I will go through all four design modifications now and go into further explanation for the ones in which staff has recommended denial. Design modification one requests an increase in the maximum building length of the assisted living building from two hundred feet to three hundred and eighty-one feet. Staff recommends approving this design modification. Design modification two requests to permit front-facing garage doors. Staff is not supportive of this request because it does not promote a walkable pedestrian connected community and creates a front facade focused on the vehicle rather than the residence. It also goes against the environment that the applicant states that they are trying to create within their development. To quote their own comparability statement, "The assisted living facility will provide service for the senior townhomes as needed. These services will include access to a physician for minor problems, meals and delivery as required, or as requested, and a neighborhood van service for shopping and house care. The van will reduce vehicular use typically seen at townhome developments." Planning applauds the developer for attempting to reduce the dependency on the car for its residents. That is why staff recommends denial of this design modification, to ensure that the garages are placed on the rear of the property building and the front of the buildings are left for a pedestrian-focused space, one where the car is not a constant impediment. Design modification number three requests to permit one sixteen-foot-wide garage door. Staff does not support this design modification because it further emphasizes the vehicle, especially when applied to the front facade. Staff would suggest that if a front-loaded garage be permitted, that this design modification be denied and require the developer to find other ways to, to provide conveniences for their intended residence. Staff would suggest using a single-loaded garage door with ample space provided on the interior of the garage to allow car doors to swing wide. Again, staff recommends denial of this design modification. Design modification four requests to permit the minimum height of the foundation for the townhomes at four inches from finished grade. Staff recommends approval of this design modification. Again, staff recommends disapproval of the development plan. If the Commission chooses to approve this plan, staff asks that you do so with the conditions provided.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience wants to speak to this item? All right, I see none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hello, my name is Greg Gamble, and again, if, want to be clear, the number one reason of the recommendation for denial is that this does not comply with the hundred-foot setback. I know that there are other issues, I want to address the first one, which is the connection between the church parking lot. My client has been talking with the owner of this property, it's not the, the church is not the owner, the Williamson Square entity is the owner of this property, they're a national corporate entity, they're going through the process to acquire that easement right now. In the event that that easement is not acquired, the cul-de-sac would be approximately this location, would be approximately this location here. The city of Franklin has a requirement that a cul-de-sac can be no longer than five hundred feet, that only twenty units can be on any given cul-de-sac. Those conditions would be complied with. We've alluded, or told staff that we would dash in or show the location of that cul-de-sac in the post-PC submittal, and that would be its location. If we don't get the easement, we don't get the remaining townhomes that are shown there on the left side of the development plan. The second issue goes back to the intent of these townhomes. We could put an alley back here behind with the garages, but there wouldn't be room for the drive in front, so you would have a sidewalk out in front. You'd basically have the exact same condition you have here, but flipped. And out the back door, off the back patio, would be the church parking lot. We feel like this is a more appropriate design solution. We understand, and that's why we pointed out at the workshop, that it is in conflict, that we would be asking for modification of standards to the zoning ordinance. These units will have residents that are over the age of sixty-five, most likely in the age of seventy-five, eighty years old, who depend on the services of the assisted living facility. These are independent living townhomes, they're age-restricted, they're a part of this campus, and the convenience and access in and out of the garage from the vehicle is critical to this particular age group. This is.